Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being a part of our social hour this afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June the 2nd. This is a combined workshop and a special voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. We're honored again today to have Pastor Jesse Lyles of the Willow Hills Baptist Church, and then Mayor Protem Kukio will lead us in the pledge. So, thanks for being here, Jesse.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, and we pause here at the beginning of this meeting here to give you thanks, Lord, for being alive, to feel the wind upon our bodies, and, Lord, we thank you for that. Lord, we give you thanks that you've allowed us to see the creativity and the beauty that we have in this area here. We thank you, Lord, for the folks that are represented here on the council and other interested people. Thank you, Lord, for them, that they desire to do the common good. And, Lord, we pray for decisions to be made here as they talk and discuss and think about ramifications and consequences of decisions, Lord. We thank you that they'll make the best interest, the decisions for the best interests of the common good here of this area. We give you thanks for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirchendall?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukio?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson is absent, excused. Councilman Lozelle?
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox is absent, excused. But you have a quorum.
Okay. We have one proclamation today that'll be presented by... What is your name, pal?
I'm sorry?
What is your name?
Gene Wilcox. Today, I'd like to do a presentation proclamation for Distracted Driving Awareness Month. Whereas distracted driving can result in injuries and death to motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists, whereas the health and well-being of our citizens are a direct result of increased awareness about the dangers of distracted driving. Whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers divert their attentions away from the task of driving to focus on another activity instead of... And whereas 80% of all crashes and 65% of all near crashes can be attributed to some sort of driver distraction. Whereas it is estimated that 1.6 million crashes per year can be attributed to cellphone talking and texting while driving. And whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable. And whereas in order to reduce the number of crashes as well as improve driver safety, motorists should dedicate themselves to adopting and maintaining self-safe behavior while behind the wheel. Maybe I shouldn't be texting while reading this. Therefore, I, Marlon Kirchendall, Mayor of the city of Prescott, recognize June 15th as Distracted Driver Awareness Month in the city of Prescott, and call on and encourage all citizens to increase their awareness of the dangers of distracted driving. I'd like to also say that, you know, we used to say that Sunday drivers are drunk drivers, but everybody knows when somebody's texting them. Do you want to add two words there? Yeah, thank you, Councilman Lozelle. I appreciate this proclamation and bringing awareness to what law enforcement sees as a growing problem throughout the country. You know, the last two years, distracted driving has contributed to over 840,000 injuries, which is huge. And so, we're just trying to bring this to light, and, you know, we try to encourage safe motoring skills, so, thank you. Now, could you get cited for distracted driving? Or would it be reckless? You know, there are some states, and in fact, some jurisdictions that actually prohibit texting and driving. You know, depending on exactly the type of actions that's as a result of the distracted driving, you can get cited, actually. Like weaving or something like that? Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozelle. Okay, in the workshop portion of our council today, we have three discussion items, starting with a airport terminal sighting assessment. John, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and honorable members of the city council. Yeah, I wanted to ask for some representatives to present to you some recent discussion regarding a terminal sighting assessment, and just the historical perspective of this. In 2007, the most recent airport master plan identified two sites at the airport for a potential terminal location. And in determining the terminal location is not only the footprint of the complex itself, but associated parking, associated outbuildings, airline service, ease of access really for the passengers, the traffic, and access to the airport, to that location. In 2000, I'm sorry, December the 2nd of 2014, the city council did approve a contract through our general contractor engineering firm, Diblin Associates, that subcontracted with Nicholas Pala and Associates to perform a terminal sighting assessment study for Prescott Airport, specifically focusing on those two areas. And Mr. Nicholas Pala, who is the owner of Nick Pala and Associates, has over 35 years of airport planning experience, and he's been a planner for several different companies, and also the past 10 years of his own company. So Nicholas Pala will be presenting this through Ken Snyder, who is actually the principal with Diblin Associates. And working in conjunction with them, each month, we had a progressive meeting regarding their findings of this terminal sighting assessment, and there was a final meeting in late March that occurred when the results of the assessment is to the point where we do deem to bring this to the city council for some considerations. So, Mr. Pala and Mr. Snyder?
John, for the council's benefit, this, as I understand it, is an opportunity for us to... This has been an information gathering process, and what will be presented to the council will be information that, as time goes on, that the council will ultimately be asked for, to make a decision.
Yes, sir.
On what direction we go.
You're correct, Mayor. And this is really the first leg of a multiple leg. This terminal sighting assessment is actually correct, an informational sharing piece, if you will, that precludes any environmental assessment. It would preclude any potential for potential grant funding or public-private partnership for the development of the building or of the surrounding environment. So, but yeah, this is actually informational sharing.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
As the council, if they have questions, do you want them, as they come about, or would you like to wait till the presentation is over before you challenge some of our suppositions? Yeah?
It would probably be best if we wait till the end, unless it's something that really needs to be asked at that point, so...
Very good.
You know, discretion...
Charlie, you here okay?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's really a pleasure to be here again. Always good to come up the mountain out of that other city down in the valley, especially when it's 107 down there. As John laid out, we'll be talking about the terminal building site assessment study. I'm gonna kind of go through the report, tell you what some of our findings are, how we came up with it. What we really tried to do is to just put a lot of information in here that would help you in your decision-making process. And part of that is realizing that this might not be something that happens right away. Could be, but it might be something that somebody needs to pick up in a couple of years or, you know, a couple of months. So, we try to show our work, so there's a lot of stuff in here. Start out with the starting point, where some assumptions, which were our original marching orders. The intent of this assessment was to provide information to this city council body to facilitate your decision-making process. And this is regarding the relative merits of the two alternate sites that John Cox referred Some of those assumptions were that the short-term demand would be based on 10,000 total annual passenger and plane months, and this was developed by the Airport Area Steering Committee. And that short-term, they didn't assign a year value to that. What we're saying in this study is that the short-term is the level that could be reached within the next few years. The second assumption was that the long-term demand is based on the activity potentially reaching 50,000 annual passenger and plane months. And this also came from the steering committee, and we're saying in this assessment that that long-term value could happen in perhaps 20 years. The methodologies we use for estimating the terminal building space, we set out that we would base that primarily upon those that are documented by the Federal Aviation Administration. We ended up drilling down to provide some more detail, and we'll talk about that a little later, and to give you some other options to show you what could happen beyond the FAA's kind of baseline methodology. The ultimate air carrier design aircraft we used was a CRJ-700, which is a 65-passenger regional jet, and this was defined by the most recent airport master plan. And then the assessment is limited to the two sites that John mentioned, which we called the West Site and the East Site, the West Site being where the existing terminal building complex is now, and the East Site being the vacant land on the other side of the runway. In the first phase of our work, the methodology we used, the basic sizing of the terminal building was based, as I mentioned before, on FAA-documented methodology, and then we expanded that so that we'd give you more detail and a more useful vision of what the potential ultimate building and the site improvements might be. The basic terminal building equations came from a set of FAA advisory circulars, and these have been, these have been around for a long time. I mean, I was using the same circulars back in the early '80s. And so, what we did is we used additional equations so that we could be more comfortable with the size of the building. And those were calculations that would give us a better handle on more up-to-date building codes for like restrooms and that sort of thing, that the FAA methodology doesn't really address in detail. And also for the TSA areas that don't appear in the old documentation, that sort of thing. The number of passenger gates was derived by an equation that's based on peaking tendencies for a daily peak period during the day. And then we checked that against the FAA's nomograph in those advisory circulars, and that only provides a typical range for the number of airline gates that you might have. The full build-out that we'll be talking about, when we use that term, was developed for each site, and that's based on the FAA's single peaking methodology, and that's that the calculated peak activity happens at one period of time during any given day. And sometimes you hear that referred to as a peak hour. It might be a couple of hours, but that's as far as their calc's go, and I'll show you how we kind of expanded that. And we use the steering committee's 50,000 annual in-plane passengers for that full build-out calculation. Now, the thing we did initially is to use an alternate model, which is a split peak, where we took that single peak hour, if you will, and split it in two, and said, "Well, it might be that the airlines will split their activity up during a day, and you'll see in a couple of slides how that will affect the size of the building." And that looks like, actually, the next slide. If you look at the, on the left, it says peak day activity, single daily peaking period, and this graphic illustrates that, where everything happens at one, say, hour or two period during the daytime. And in this example, we show two arrivals and two departures happening in, say, a single peak hour. And you can see that the blue rectangle that's kind of encompassing the arrival and departure arrows there represents the size of the terminal building, and in our case, we calculated 47,000 square feet based on that single peak. When we shift that to a split peaking, and in the example, we said maybe a morning and afternoon peak with the same number of daily peak operations. If you split it in two, you can see what happens to the building size. It goes down significantly, and our calc's came up with 24,000 square feet. So, just to hang your hat on that basic FAA methodology, we felt wasn't enough for this. Just for your information, the peak hour passengers that we use were 65 in the short-term. That's based on that 10,000 annual in-plane months. That distills down to 65 per day in the peak period, which is something like one full flight from that CRJ-700, which just has 65 seats. In that long-term, that is the 50,000 in-plane months, we calculate 323 peak hour passengers, which is like five full flights. And so, for the full potential build-out for each site, we based that on that single peak model, and you'll see that in just a minute. And that gives you a vision of the potential maximum space requirements that's based on what we could call a worst-case scenario, if the airlines were in fact going to put all their flights in during one period. Now, one thing to keep in mind as I go through this, it wasn't our intention to design a terminal building. That wasn't part of our work scope. But we had to do some conceptual layout work, and you'll see some floor plans and building envelopes, just to see what would fit on each site in this worst case. Now, the architects that come along are gonna have some different ideas on what the building is actually gonna look like and how it will fit on the site. So, we developed a concept floor plan for each of the two sites based on that single peak space requirement, and that was a 47,000-square-foot building with four passenger gates. And you'll see that we based the building envelope on a taxi-in and taxi-out operation by the regional jets, and that is they taxi in, and they crank their nose wheel all around, and they can make a 180 and taxi out without being towed back. It takes a little bit more space, but you don't have to have the tow equipment. Then we also did a concept floor plan for, based on that split peak scenario, and that reduced it down to 24,000 square feet with only two passenger gates. And also, we did an air carrier apron, of course, to serve each of the sites that would fit with that building. And we did some calc's for automobile parking and access roads, conceptually, again, for each of the sites. This slide shows you the concept layout for the West Site, which is where the existing terminal building is now, or just west of that location. And again, this is a concept layout only, but you can see we had to come up with some areas for like the restaurants and ticketing, and for the concourse holding areas and that sort of thing. And we also had to stretch the concourse out so that it could reach those four ultimate aircraft parking positions. That's why it has that kind of elongated shape. And again, this is something that in concept would work on the site. It's not to say this is what the building should or will end up looking like. And this, again, is that single peaking 47,000-foot building. This is what happens when you reduce it to the split peak scenario, and you can see the full build-out dashed in, and then the 24,000 smaller, square-foot smaller building superimposed with only two gate positions. And again, if it were to be built to look like this, you can see that it would be fully expandable if you did need to go larger. And what really happens with this is gonna be dependent on the airline market, their business model, how Prescott will ultimately be served in the future. This is for the West Site, and then we did the same thing for the East Site. Similar concept floor plan that fits the East Site, again, with the same four taxi-in, taxi-out parking positions. And we also did the split smaller building that brings it right down, and you can see, again, that it's fully expandable. This particular type of layout, if you're familiar with the St. George Airport, it's very similar to that. They've got something about this type of layout, it's a little bit bigger, but they also have future plans that they can expand north and south. Now, as I said, we laid these buildings out so that they would fit with each site. And this was the more difficult part, because, especially on the West Site, because there were constraints. In particular, this site layout, again, based on that 47,000-foot full build-out model, we entered into this assuming that we would not disturb the existing buildings that are to the, well, above, on this slide, above to the north or northwest of the terminal building, where there's a shop complex in the Airport Administration Building and the North Air Building, that we wouldn't touch those, that we'd lay it out so that they would not have to be demolished and relocated. And as we go through this, the estimates that I'll present and the further analysis for the West Site is based on this, on this model. And we do have an alternate site for the West Site. This shows kind of the other side of the coin, if you were to build a phased building that is actually pushed to the northeast further to put the auto parking on the north side of Janine Drive, as opposed to our initial one, which utilizes the land north of the golf course and over to the existing hangars. So, this one, there's developable land available between the golf course and the terminal complex. But you can see that this would also mean that you'd have to take out that complex of buildings, demolish and relocate them in the future. Now, this is, this is a phased development, and the way it's laid out, that demolition would not have to occur until the third phase, if and when that ever happened. The downside of this is that demolition and relocation could add up to like $7 million to the entire program, you know, assuming that you would need those facilities to be That's the West Site. We did the same thing on the East Site, starting with the terminal building layout that I showed you earlier with the same four positions. This was a much cleaner site, 'cause there's really nothing there yet. And so, it was an easier task. It fit a lot better. We didn't have to worry about demolition and relocation. We did come up with an alternate early in the process. We were looking at the land across Melville Road that's up about 40 feet above the airport, that's actually on the airport layout plan and the master plan, scheduled to be at some point acquired by the airport for future development. And at the time, we thought, well, we might not be able to fit all these, the terminal building, the auto parking, all the facilities on that East Site, so we should look at a plan to build part of it in the industrial park off of Cirrus Drive, which is shown here, and then dropping down the 40 feet. And you can see a section over to the left, building section AA, that shows that, where you have auto parking off of Cirrus Drive up above, and then you enter the terminal building there. There's a two-story portion, and you go down across Melville Road, and then down escalators and elevators to the rest of the terminal building. We found out, in fact, as we got into the early phases of the study, that there was plenty of room. And so, we kept this in the study for reference purposes, again, showing our work, but we found that it really wasn't necessary to go any further with the analysis on this. We also found that this would be at least $2 million more, just because of the type of construction, the vertical transportation systems and that sort of thing. Plus, the acquisition of, I think there's three lots there that would have to be acquired in order to do that. In the next phase of the work, we did conceptual site layouts for each of the two sites that shows an initial terminal building construction phase, and this goes back to the steering committee's 10,000 annual in-plane months as opposed to 50,000. We used methodologies that included a concept envelope based on that single peak space requirement, and we came up with 9,000 square feet with a single passenger gate. We didn't take that down to a, drill it down to the split peak, because when you get to this size of building, it's really hard to cram in all the concession areas, the ticketing, the baggage claim, and make it much smaller. You probably could, but we didn't feel like it was necessary in this case. We stuck with the taxi-in, taxi-out operations for that CRJ-700. We also did alternative off-site roadway access alternatives and evaluated those, and we did approximate costs for each alternative for both the 9,000-square-foot and the 47,000 square-foot buildings. We did layouts, again, very conceptual. We just basically, I don't know if you can see it on there, but that full build-out 47,000-foot building is ghosted in with a white dashed line. My eyes aren't that good. I can't see it, but maybe you can. And then you can see a first phase of a corner of that building, and that's the yellow 9,000-square-foot portion. And then there's phasing of the auto parking included, but the entire access road network is shown in the first phase. We did the same thing on the East Site. You can see the ghosted-in full 47,000-foot build-out and then the 9,000-square-foot And now, we're gonna shift gears a little bit, and Ken Snyder's gonna come up to the mic and talk about the offset roadway access aspects for each site.
We'll leave the exciting terminal planning to the side for a moment, and talk about a little more esoteric issues of getting your customers, future customers, in and out to the two sites, and weighing the ease of access and how convenient the two sites are relative to each other. And this is the West Site, and one of the significant advantages of this site is that a lot of the roadway infrastructure is either in place or is either under construction or planned. Deepwell Ranch Road coming in from the northwest of the airport, and Willow Creek Road under design right now, that really helps provide convenient access points for your terminal-bound traffic. The other benefit of this site is the terminal itself is fairly close to the major transportation corridor, so that reduces the time that vehicles spend on the lower-speed roadways and improves the travel time or reduces the travel time into the terminal. So, this is a benefit from the user experience. It also significantly reduces the cost, 'cause a lot of the infrastructure's already gonna be in place, and we estimate the cost of improvements to the local area roadway system, mostly on Mac Curdy, about a million, a million dollars. Another benefit of this location is that you do have duplicate entrances into the terminal area, Deepwell Ranch on the north, Mac Curdy on the west. If you have an accident or construction on one of those routes, you still have an alternate access into the terminal, so that's very critical from a transportation standpoint. Moving on to the East Site, our situation there was not nearly as simple. Number one, the terminal location is offset significantly from the transportation corridor, 89A, and so, that increases the travel time for users going into the terminal. It also increases the cost of bringing those routes up to acceptable standards. We need a three-lane roadway, so you have left-turn lanes for all of your business uses in the industrial park area. We did a couple of different options. The one on the left is using kind of existing routes, requires a lot of reconstruction on Melville Road. The one on the right is kind of clipping the corner of one of the lots and trying to get a little more... to get a little more direct access into the site, reduces the cost a little bit, reduces the travel time a little bit, but still significantly higher travel times to the terminal core than we saw on the west side. And two major disadvantages of these two options are that there's only one real access into the terminal, so you don't have that redundant access in case of accidents or construction. And the other major downfall of this option is Mac, I'm sorry, Larry Caldwell, the intersection on Larry Caldwell does not have the capacity ultimately to handle all the volume going to and from the terminal and the industrial park. So eventually, that intersection will break down and would require a significant amount of expensive upgrades in order to have the capacity to service all this development. So to try to address that, we looked at another couple of options, which uses the programmed access on the southeast side, the Granite Dells alignment, which is programmed in the regional transportation plan as a regional roadway, plenty of capacity on that intersection on 89A. But again, in order to get to the terminal area, we're going to have to build a significant amount of roadway infrastructure, including crossing the creek with a bridge and a lot of roadway improvements. So this increases the travel time because the distances are longer and also substantially increases the cost to get in the appropriate infrastructure to service the terminal. The benefit is, in this case, that we do reinstitute the dual access so that we have the redundancy from Larry Caldwell and the other side. So that's the basic consideration. There's a somewhat fuzzy issue also that we didn't speak too much about in the assessment, but, you know, customer experience going to the terminal location, there's an argument that could be made that the aesthetics of the entrance to the west side are somewhat better with the golf course and a little bit newer area, and then the south side, your customers are going to be driving through in industrial parks, and there may be an issue there in terms of the aesthetics and the customer experiences that go into the
Thanks, Ken. You see the slide that's up there is showing your breakdown summary of the estimated costs. Starting at the top of the table, that's again that full build-out. We show comparative costs for the west and the east sites. With the terminal building alone for the full build-out, that 47,000-square-foot building is about $8 million. And since we just did a simple estimate of gross square footage, you'll see that they're the same at about $8 million. Site development, that's the auto parking, the apron, the site utilities for the west site is about 5.2 million, for the east side about 4.7, so, you know, fairly close in terms of the type of estimating we're doing at this point in the planning. One big difference is the off-site airport access that Ken was talking about, and as he went through the east side alternates, you saw that there was a range of costs that went anywhere from a little over $4 million to over $9 million, depending on which one you use. For this particular table, we used the least expensive, and that's that $4.4 million option. Dropping down to that initial phase, which was that 9,000-square-foot corner of the full build-out, the terminal building is about 1.6 million. And when we talk about that, the cost of the terminal building, we're talking about a very functional package, not making, some airports want to build a terminal building that makes a statement, and it's really fancy. That's not what we did here. We used a square footage cost that is a functional building, that is something that is easy to manipulate and modify as times change, as the market changes, that sort of thing. Again, the site development and utilities is about 3.3 million for both the west and the east sites for that first phase, but we have that same off-site airport access problem, where, you know, we have a big discrepancy in the costs, and that's where most of the cost difference is between these two different sites. The total approximate cost for the full build-out, west side's about 14 million, east side is about 17 million. For the first phase, west side is about 5.9 million, and the east side about 9.3, so fairly close there. This is the point we're at now, which is the decision factors and analysis. In this final draft, we are not presenting a recommendation, we're just presenting our work, presenting our findings, so that you can have a tool that will contribute to your decision-making processes. You see a list of the factors that we looked at when we were evaluating, trying to get a sense of, is there a site that is head and shoulders above, you know, the best one? Is there one that, you know, rises to that? I'll just go to the last slide here, which has the same information on it. This is our evaluation matrix, and this, if you look at the ratings, one of the things we did is we struggled with weighting multipliers. That is, are any of these criteria more important than the other when you look at them side by side? And the only thing we applied here as far as a weighting multiplier are, we applied a factor of two to any of the criteria that would have impacts that went into the future. If it's impacts that go away after you build it, like difficulty of construction phasing, we didn't weight that, it's a 1.0. If it's an operational consideration that's going to be there forever, then we weighted that by a factor of two. And what we're hoping is that we can get input from this body and from the stakeholders of the airport as to, is there something we need to know about these that makes one criterion more worthy of weighting than another? And so you see, as we go through this, that the weighting values over on the right, we looked at the non-cost factors separately from the cost factors. And if you look at the non-cost factors, which is the expansion potential and constraints and all that, the potential for environmental impacts, some of which were equal for the sites, we came up with six points for the west side and eight points for the east side, so the east side comes up as somewhat better, but certainly not in the range where we'd say, well, of course, it's the east side. You know, there's a two-point difference, especially with the, you know, not really being sure about how we're going to weight these in the final report, there's nothing that rises to the level of being the obvious candidate. When we looked at the costs, again, we go back to the big differences in the cost to actually access the site, the east side being much more expensive, even if we use that least expensive alternate, which I think was $4.4 million. And so you see that the west side for the cost, the cost-associated items comes up with 5.4, and the east side with only 2.1 points, so that's a greater spread. But then if you add it all up, you'll see that they're pretty darn close, they're within about a point, less than a point and a half of each other. And so we're at that point where we really need some input from the city council, from the stakeholders, so that when we go to the final matrix, if you want a recommendation, then we'd be, you know, of course, willing to do that. Still, the function of this is really to give you information so that you can make your decision. With that, we can go to questions and comments, and we'll be available.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that we were told why the terminal needed to be replaced is because the current terminal was too close to the active runway. It was like, and I'm going to pull these numbers out, and they may be vastly incorrect, but it was 250 feet now, and current standards said that it had to be 700 feet away. It doesn't look with the west side option that any of that has changed.
That's correct. That has not changed. The existing terminal is in non-compliance with standards because it's too close to the runway. So in the future, whatever happens, in order to be in compliance with FAA criteria, it has to go.
But the new terminal is that close?
Yeah, the new terminal is in compliance. It's at the building restriction line, we've moved it farther to the north and west. So if you go back to that exhibit.
There. You can see, let's see.
You see the southern limit of the yellow terminal building? That's right on the building restriction line? The old terminal is completely inside that. So it's there, it's out of compliance with FAA standards, it's kind of there, it's grandfathered.
Right, if you go to, all the way to the left of that slide, below the north arrow, you see airport property line and then building restriction line?
Use this so we can see what you're talking about.
It disappears.
See, they have one, see?
Does it work? Yeah, it works. Okay, right here. This is the building restriction line, and you can see that the new building is totally within it. The existing is way out here.
Okay, I see. Thank you. And on your exhibits, it didn't show any, it showed holding areas for people that were waiting to get on the plane, it didn't show holding areas for people waiting to pick people up from the plane?
Yeah, in the calculations, that meet-and-greet area is in there, and
Okay.
It's in the, you know, the ticketing baggage claim, it's in that area. We don't have it flagged, you know, exactly flagged out, specifically flagged out, but it's in the calc's.
And the other thing I noticed that wasn't in there, we showed auto parking, but we didn't show a special area for the rental cars. If we're going to have that, it seems like when you go to these smaller airports, the rental cars take up quite a bit of that space, and a lot of times they're in kind of prime space.
Again, the number of auto parking spaces that we show includes rental cars, but we didn't, at this point, we didn't make a specific area for it. Thanks, Mayor. Couple things. I'm in favor of the, first of all, it's, the, this is years down the line, I would assume, before we start tearing anything down. I'm in favor of the east side because the hangars, moving those, removing the hangars is only one of our largest sources of income for the airport, correct?
Yeah, council member, it is. These hangars were actually constructed, they're the earliest portion of the construction of hangars, and they're nearly 40 years old, so they're starting to, they're at the very end of their useful life anyway. If those hangars were proposed to be demolished, the recommendation would be to relocate those to an existing general aviation hangar facility, everybody affectionately refers to as the bottleneck hangar area. Those hangars as general aviation hangars in what we consider more of a commercial and a, an industrial area, they're not in the proper location to begin with. So, yes, you're right, I mean, that is a revenue stream.
Are these the ones we just sprinkled?
No, sir. No, those aren't included in the sprinkler system improvements.
Another reason I'm in favor of the east side is, you know, the folks that have businesses in the industrial area on the east side already, that Larry Caldwell entrance is highly, I mean, it's not even adequate to support what's in there right now. And if we were to go to that Granite Dells access, that would increase the viability of bringing light industry back there more than there is right now. So that's why I'm kind of in favor of that east entrance. I'm not, I'm not sold on whether it's pleasurable to the eye when people are going to the airport or not, and they don't pick an airport, God, look at Phoenix Airport, they still use it, don't they?
Yeah.
And as far as the costs, I'm never, I'd never put credence into costs. I haven't seen a government that doesn't like to spend money, so, or save it.
Can I add one more comment real quick, Mayor? Just the cost to demolish and remove those hangars, what was included in the infrastructure cost for the west side? So we did capture that, we replaced that functionality at another location.
See?
Well, and if you look at the cost, you know, one way or the other, we need a terminal, I like the access value of the west side, being there, going McCurdy and be able to go out the other way to a major thoroughfare, I think that's important, whether it's attractive or not, I couldn't care less. And if the cost is really built into removal of, or North Air or the administrative offices as well as the hangars, then I would suggest the west side would be the more appropriate place to put it, if that cost is built in. But those facilities have to be relocated somewhere, the administration, the mechanic shop, those things, would you move those over to the east side on that piece of vacant property?
That's a good question, council member. There's several other areas identified for, you know, potential redevelopment areas. And again, the areas that are identified where it says shop and airport administration and the former location of the North Air complex, that's a Phase 3, which is at a minimum 15 years out. You know, if Phase 1 has a value of, say, one to seven years, and Phase 2 is seven years to 15 years, just the construction phase in Phase 3 is 15 years out, which could include the demolition of those facilities. The existing age of those facilities, I want to say it was they were constructed in the late '70s, early '80s. Another 15 years from now, I think they're going to be nearing over 50 years old.
Charlie, did you see that?
I did, Mayor. Could they please put up the east side plan? It's about a 30-second delay on my end to see it on TV, but I had a question there.
Okay, on the east side?
And in talking about the access, you know, from my perspective, I think one of the things that is very underutilized from the city's perspective is the industrial park, and that's an area that if we're able to fold in, creating that new access to our terminal, I think it has immense value for the next 50 years, as far as our economic development options go. Could you all describe for me again the major difference in your plans between the east side inside the fence and the east side using some of the adjoining property?
The east, you're talking about the two phases that we, or the two alternate layouts that we came up with on the east side?
Yes.
I believe? I'm flipping back to that.
Give him 30 seconds to think.
Right, and I will give you 30 seconds. The primary layout that we used was where we found that, yes, it was possible to put the entire full build-out building, plus the entire auto parking area, plus the air carrier apron on the existing site, that is, on the present airport property. And the second phase, or the second layout, there we go. In order to do that, the reason we did this, and we did this in the very early part of the study, we came up with a layout where if we didn't have enough space on the east side proper, that is, on the existing airport property, we could overflow into the industrial park above, that 40 feet above Melville Road. And so the difference between the two is, the difference in cost and the difference in structure is that we'd have a two-story to one-story build-out descending from the corporate lots above, 40 feet above, and descending then the 40 feet down to what we call the east side proper, which is the existing airport property. The difference in cost would be, for the land acquisition, would be about $200,000 to purchase the three, the three corporate lots on Cirrus Drive, and that would be the what we call the Phase 2 auto parking, that's the ultimate auto parking, plus the Phase 1, or the Phase 2 terminal entrance. As far as the other cost differences, this type of construction, we believe, would add at least $2 million to the building, as opposed to just a single level as the initial layout shows, which is just a single, a single-level building. This one is much more complex.
Okay. And then a question for John. The land between the proposed site and the existing hangars, can you... The land between the proposed site and the existing hangars, can you just refresh for everyone, what is the status of that land, and what are the plans for that property?
I hope I'm responding. The map up here does show the west side where the existing terminal is, and your question is really to address the land that is between the existing facilities that are identified up here as the shop, the airport administration, and the north air facility, and the potential location of the new facility, am I correct?
Sorry, I'm speaking to the east side still. Between the proposed location and the existing hangars that are the private hangars?
AT, that ATCT site.
Yeah, that is a location that was identified in the master plan for the, potential for the future air traffic control tower site, so that the controllers can see all of the ends of all of the runways, and/or the potential aircraft rescue and firefighting location, a new site for that, so that the emergency service team has the response time that's required by the FAA for accessing the airside.
Okay, really good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We've had a draft, a very rough draft of this for, what, a couple of months? And I know every time I've looked at it, I've changed my mind from the previous. The more you look at it, the more things you find pluses and minuses, and I think that what we don't see at this point is what the improvements on the highway system to the west is going to look like, once we improve eighty-nine, and then the bypass road, and all of a sudden, the access into the, the terminal on the west side really starts to stand out by a reason of the easy access of getting into it from both eighty-nine A and eighty-nine. So this is something that we'll be looking at for a long time. But on the east side, the one thing that I think we have to keep in mind is, fifteen years down the road, those three lots that might be needed for the final build-out will be much more expensive if they have been improved and something is built on them that time. So I think on the east side, you'd need to give some serious thought to some land acquisition at the early stage, purely for the future, and of course, that takes money, so. But a good, a good presentation, I think you've tucked it in very well, and as time goes on and we see other development, will probably lead us one direction or the other, even more so than we think today.
And Mayor, one thing that I can at least say after previewing this, and I'm trying to understand, that it's Aviation Airport, it's talking about a terminal, and when you start doing that, you ask where the traffic's going to come from to support the terminal. So when you start talking about everything moving out to the north, the new hospital land, the ranch land, the annexation, really, the west side is more beneficial for access with that in mind, taking in the Williamson Valley people, as well as the eighty-nine A side coming in. So I would still lean to the west side.
Yeah, well, you know, this, this whole study was a result of looking at, at that entire area, and every time we would look at the area as a, as an economic opportunity, all of a sudden, the airport would jump up and force us to make that decision first. So as the, as the north and west of the airport goes, it'll be a reflection of what the airport itself is.
Well, as we're sitting here, as the phone calls that I've received, at what point in time do we get serious about making a decision? You know, all these things that we pay out and have people do, and stand up and give presentations, at what point in time do we get serious about a funding mechanism, about hitting the trigger for an environmental assessment? At what point in time do we actually tell the folks in the region, not only in Prescott, that we're serious about doing this, and let's move forward? And, you know, I've been sitting here on this counter for sixteen years, and we're still at square one.
Well, and of course, we've, we've generally made a commitment that it's time to go forward. Now, that'll be some of you folks that have to follow it through, because I don't even buy green bananas. And, but there will be a, there will be a future of, of the airport and that side of Prescott. So I think we're moving, and we just need to keep the ball in the air.
And Mayor, I think we're doing this a different way than it's been done in the past with this phase-in approach, I think that's necessary. You know, if I knew was going to expect 50,000 customers, I wouldn't go out and buy 25 trucks, you know, I'd buy two at a time. And I think that's what we need to do on this, this terminal, is we need to design it, knowing that it's going to expand, and then maybe we could get into something that's very functional at a reasonable price, and then be able to move forward into the future as, as demand grows.
Can I ask a question? It doesn't have to do with the terminal, but it certainly has to do with the airport tower. When they first put that in many years ago, Farnsworth Construction, there was some talk and some ideas at that plant on that tower that we have as it sits today that could be added on to, to give it higher height. Is that not true? I mean, from my standpoint, it's because it's not high enough to catch the end of the runway. It would seem to me that we would exhaust that avenue. I know when I put the blinds in that thing, strapped in with harnesses on that glass here and in Scottsdale, and I think at the time when they designed that, they designed it as a second phase to increase the height of that structure, is that possible? Rather than looking at an all brand-new site?
John, I can help you with that. I think that in, at that moment in time, we were talking, we talked about a expandable cab, but, but it didn't turn out to be that. I don't think that, that tower ended up one that you could add another, another section.
Well, I would just say, let's make sure we exhaust that avenue for, for cost reasons. You know, the, the offices and everything else are existing, if they're insufficient, then that's a different story. But if it's all about height and being able to see the whole runway and its full expansion, if that's exhausted, then we need to do a different direction. But, you know, if it's able to be expanded, it seems realistic to look at it.
I think we're there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Let's move on to item B, and we'll try to move through that. We have several people here for item C, so let's try to move on through item B.
Item one B, introduction of proposed engineering and utility fees.
Good afternoon, the Honorable Mayor and Councilor, Henry Hatch Public Works. We are here to talk about the proposed fees and fee adjustments for our public work services. This is for various public works activities pertaining to private development. There are three reasons for coming before you for this fee adjustment. Number one, we really like to provide better customer service, provide high-quality inspection, and catch mistakes before it is too late. And we capture cities' costs for all the services that we provide. For the last several months, the public work staff, we have been working and researching. Gwen Ravitch, who will give the presentation more in details to you later, has really done a good job to find other cities, other counties, what they do, how they do, and come up with justification with the backup for all the proposed fees. They have worked with the city manager. And I know you always want us to work with our stakeholders, we have. We have talked to Sandy Griffiths, who has been really very, very helpful to us and very supportive. We have had a meeting, not only with Sandy, but with other stakeholders, Fan Contracting, Haley Construction, Decel Construction, Beast Contracting, and also from Jason Gysi's office. They all have been supportive of this. In fact, I see Sandy and Mr. Mike Fan are here, in case you have questions for them or they want to say something. So with that, with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to ask Gwen to give you a bit more detailed presentation.
Sorry, I'm a little shorter than Henry. Okay, so we're here today to talk about whether or not the fees we collect for engineering services, activities, are enough to recover the cost to provide the service. The fees that we're going to talk about today, they are not all-inclusive of all of the fees that are utilized by our division and department, but the, here on the screen, we're going to talk about the ones that we're suggesting be altered, either up or down today. Number one is inspections. It's important to note that these inspections are for public infrastructure. These are not building inspections, they're not grading inspections, they're for water mains, sewer mains, drainage, paving, sidewalk, improvements of that nature. And also, under the newly mandated MS4 permit, we are required to perform erosion and sediment control inspections on every parcel or for every permit that disturbs soil. In addition to that, we're going to talk about plan review fees for water, sewer, drainage, and streets, the cost to tap water and sewer mains. When we go out and assist with locating and troubleshooting locations of water and sewer mains, we have very old infrastructure here, and sometimes we're challenged, and so are our partners in the community, to find the infrastructure. And then we're going to talk about water meters, the installation of water meters, the price of water meters, and when we have to go out and reread them for errors or potential errors, and when we turn them on and off. We'll start with inspection fees. Historically, inspection fees have been charged on a linear foot basis for water and sewer, and by the square yard for streets. When I looked at other communities and other methods that are used to determine what an equitable fee for this service is, there were things such as a percentage of the engineer's estimate, linear feet of, and square yard. Almost every community used an hourly rate in some capacity, either to recover fees where they don't have a fee to charge, or they basically used an hourly rate. In looking at the city's cost to provide service on an hourly rate, we use personnel cost, we used overhead cost, vehicle, equipment, maintenance, that sort of thing. When, when looking at how we currently assess the fee versus how we're proposing to assess the fee, it was important to use a couple of recent examples. So I pulled up some developments, twenty lot development and a 200 lot development, and applied the fees accordingly under these methodologies. What we found was that smaller developments historically do not pay enough fees to cover the actual time that is spent in the field, and larger developments, on average, pay more than they should. So it was suggested that the hourly rate be used, an hour in the field for an hour inspection cost. In addition to this reasonably reflecting actual cost, it also provides the city with a mechanism to outsource inspection fees if it becomes necessary. We don't control when or how many developments come in, we have a fixed staff, a fixed resource leveling with staff, and so when we have many developments come online, we're often challenged with spending enough time on each job that's needed. This hourly fee would allow us to outsource if that became necessary. Secondly, is the erosion and sediment control fee. As I previously stated, it's a mandated inspection that we provide for every permit that disturbs soils. In this fiscal year, we provided over 600 erosion and sediment control inspections in the field, and as you know, erosion and sediment control is a direct contributor to our protection of our creeks and lakes. You'll notice that the fee for erosion and sediment control is slightly less than the hourly public works inspection rate. That's due to the fact that the amount of time that's needed to perform the inspection, and it can also be, it can also be joined with other inspections that are taking place at the site at the same time, so we felt it was warranted to reduce the fee.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
That erosion fee, the mandated, mandated fee?
Yes, it's not a mandated fee, it's a mandated inspection, yes.
Or a mandated inspection. I put a fence up, I put a shed up that I need to scrape clean, and I get a permit on it. Does it have to be inspected for soil erosion?
We try to use good judgment, you know, when people are digging a post hole, we generally don't require an erosion and sediment control inspection.
I won't say anything.
But if you're, if you're adding a new deck, a new, anything that requires a substantial amount of dirt, then we do come out, and we do require that those best management practices or BMPs be in place prior to any inspections taking place.
Okay.
Under plan review fees, in July, or I'm sorry, in June of 2014, the council updated fees related to plan review. The proposal was at $96 per page for the first review for water and sewer, and $63 per page for the first review for streets, primarily paving and drainage. The second review was at no charge, and the third review or subsequent reviews were at $48 per page for the third review for water and sewer, and $31 per page for streets, paving, and drainage. Under this proposal, all reviews would be charged at the first review rate. I think it's important to know that when we do plan review, every plan comes in for second round review. I've been with the city for eight and a half years, I've never seen a plan issued on the first round of plan review. However, I can tell you that less than 10% of the plans that we look at come in for a third round review, and less than 5% of that come in for more than three rounds of review. We try to work with, with our partners in the community to be clear about what the red line comments are, what the changes we're expecting are, so that plans don't come in over and over and over, because that is a tax on our resources within the department as well. Under the utility portion of this fee adjustment, I want to talk a little bit about the Lucity database. I know you've seen presentations on the Lucity database, it's used by our water and wastewater operations staff to track their activities. They create work orders, we know how much time they spend on each activity, we know what vehicle they used, how long they used that vehicle, we know what equipment they used. And so because we've had the program online long enough, we were able to actually extract six years of data in terms of these activities, to get a true average cost of what it takes to provide these services. Under the proposed fee, sewer taps are proposed at $316. D tests are a new fee. D tests are when contractors having difficulty locating where the discharge of the sewer is coming out into the main, or from the house to the street. And so we perform about 20 to 25 of those a year, where we go in and assist contractors or local community members to do that. The same with private tap locations, again, we have aging infrastructure. I recently discovered a yard line that went from a house, it went past a street, past an alley, and was connected to the next street over. So sometimes we have some difficulty finding and helping our customers find these things. So the private tap location fee is new, is to assist when these kinds of things occur. Under the proposed water fees, again, the information was provided out of the Lucity database. Water taps currently are on a sliding scale. After reviewing the data, it was obvious that any tap that's two inches or less costs the same amount of money. Whether we do a five-eighths inch tap, or a one-inch tap, or a two-inch tap, it still costs the city $242 to perform the tap. So rather than have a sliding scale, we're proposing that taps that are two inches or less at $242, and anything greater than two inches would be at $517. The city also assists with fire line testing. That is done when a new development is coming online and an engineer needs to have flow, either gallons per minute or pressure coming out of city main data, in order to model their project and tell us that there'll be sufficient flows within the line to provide fire protection to the project. The city also rereads meters for a variety of reasons. Last year, we, we performed that task 1,939 times. This particular fee is recommended to go down based on the current fee. This is sufficient to cover city costs and time to perform the service. When someone doesn't pay the bill, or a variety of other reasons, a meter needs to be turned on or off, this fee is also recommended to be reduced based on actual time to perform the service, from $50 down to 36. the service, from $50 down to $36. Last year, the city went out and was fortunate enough to participate in a state bid for the purchase of water meters. We installed 253 water meters last year alone. Those primarily were 5/8ths and 1-inch meters. This would primarily be a reduction in the cost of water meters. This fee would cover not only the meter itself, but the cost to install it with city personnel. As Henry mentioned, we've had community partners while we've gone through this process. We met on two separate occasions with the Yavapai County Contractors Association, both at their quarterly meeting and with various members of their group. In addition to that, we met with local developers to discuss the fees and how they would be assessed. The number one concern that came out of the meetings was that a developer did not want to have a large sum of money owed to the city at the end of a project. So we took that into consideration, and in your packet was included a deposit policy, which we intend to implement, which would assist contractor in estimating the amount of inspection time that it would take for the project, based on what we see in the plans. We have some standards in there, but they can be fluctuated based on what we see in terms of what's being installed. We also track inspectors' time by the hour through our track it database, and so we know exactly how much time they spend on each job. As Henry also mentioned, some of the benefits are higher levels of customer service by providing adequate time in the field for inspections, which results in higher quality infrastructure. The city's ability to manage work fluctuations through outside resourcing in both plan review and inspections. And of course, some of these fees will be more closely aligned with actual costs, based on the information we were able to pull out of the Lucity database. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor. Go ahead. Yeah. I'm glad at the end there you put customer service, and I talked to Henry prior to the meeting. If these fees truly are in line, then the customer truly is paying your wage. And unlike a lot of us, the city employees, they know when their check comes every day. And through customer service, you know, these contractors, these subcontractors, these developers, these evil, evil developers, depend on draws from the bank, whether they're laying asphalt, or waiting for their sewer inspection. And if this truly will increase that response time with customer service, with a smile on your face, and expediate the process, I have no problem with it, as long as it's fair and honest.
Wow. Is that in the city plan, a smile on their face? All right.
Thank you.
Kyle, you have a question?
Yes.
Were those fees that the city's charging, like on the water meters, or are those the actual water meter costs?
The actual water meter, the physical meter, is less than the fee that you see here.
Okay.
That fee includes the city's staff and equipment and vehicles, et cetera, to install the meter. It's a total cost. Currently, for example, currently, a 5/8 inch meter is $220. We're suggesting that it be reduced to $208.
That's for the meter and the installation?
That is correct.
Okay.
I have a quick question. In 2013, last year, a year before, the, an inch and a half meter, what is the current price on that right now?
Currently, to purchase the physical meter is $800.
And then, do they pay to have it installed, or does it?
That is the cost to purchase the meter and install it.
So thousands of dollars. I don't even see, with their, a 6 or 7 inch would be, what, seven grand or something, maybe?
It would exponentially go up, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have another question that I didn't quite understand. When you said about helping customers locate their water line?
Yes.
How does that work when the city supposedly has, through the process, when the city was formed, even in older, older parts of town, and you build a house, and all of a sudden you think the lines were, should be, and it's not? How does that become the customer or the residential person or property owner's problem to pay that fee? Don't you think it should be the city's problem because of the lines not where it was said it was supposed to be? I have a prime example of that in my own house, where, when it was built, the line was supposed to be in a certain spot, and it was not. So when they did find it, they didn't find one, but they found two. And one was supposed to be dead, and it wasn't. And it's because the lines were so old, they were never identified. So the question I have is, why are we charging a customer a fee if the city doesn't know where their lines are in the first place?
I believe in the example that I gave. The line that we're helping to locate is the private side on the customer's side, yard line, not the city main. We typically know where our mains are.
Okay.
I won't say always, but we typically know where they are.
Okay, so it is on the private side that you're helping the customer find?
It is, and it's an assistance that we provide.
Okay. I understand that then, thank you.
Greg Warren. Charlie, any questions?
Mayor, no questions. I think Councilor Mazel hit the nail on the head. You know, if we're going to be looking at this, and truly part of it is cost recovery, but the other part is customer service, I think there needs to be a mechanism to gauge that, and something that we need to constantly be watching to ensure that we're turning around the best customer service possible.
Okay. Want to continue?
Thank you.
This item will come back to you on July 7th. Thank you.
Okay.
We're good.
Mayor, I see Sandy sitting here from YCC. I'd like to hear what she thinks on this whole thing, because she said, they're saying they support it. I'd like to hear it from the, I ain't going to say horse's mouth, but.
Sandy, you've got 32 minutes. We don't need to be in the dark, Mayor.
We don't need to be in the dark most of the time.
Mayor, hi. Thank you, Councilman Cookneal. I do buy green bananas. Thank you to Mr. Hatch and his team in putting together a focus group with your industry partners right here in the city of Prescott. We do support this wholeheartedly. It's a good approach to more improved, better customer service and quality work by the city of Prescott, and one of their very viable departments. And we took our time, we asked questions, we really worked through the process, and it's not all about making money, but they need to perform services in which they're compensated for their time and effort. And Public Works is one department that does bend over backwards five days a week to help this community and our developers and contractors. So we're very blessed, and we did support this 101%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Mike, I see you being quiet. Any comments? You? Okay. Okay. Okay, let's, we're ready to move along.
Yes, sir.
Item C.
Item 1C, discussion of downtown special event timeframes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. This is an opportunity for Council to discussion and direction regarding possible guidelines for hours of operation, as they relate to special events requiring city approval in the downtown business district, including special event liquor license. Before I turn it over for discussion, just a couple of statistics, if you will. The number of events held in the public rights of ways in the downtown business district in 2014, we had 28. Now, these are any events that impact the rights of way. If there's a partial closure or a closure, it could be an event on the square, which we don't control the square, but it might include a street closure with that event. Any event in the downtown business district, as well as, we have the KC Car Show, which is on Willis Street.
Joel, this does not include the craft tent thing, or it does?
It does not.
Okay.
In 2015, that number will grow just a little bit, up to 30. The number of events in 2014 that served alcohol with their event was eight. In 2015, that number remains the same. The number of events that operated after 8 o'clock in the downtown business district that had any kind of a street closure, in 2014, there was four. In 2015, if everything goes according to the calendar, there will be six. There was only one event in the downtown business district that served alcohol after 10 o'clock, and that was a Fourth of July street dance. So with that, I would turn it over to you guys for any discussion, and I can answer any questions you have. And I also have Michelle Stacy Schroeder, Recreation Coordinator in my department, that handles a lot of the special event applications.
Joe, I had asked earlier for Allison to be available. Today, most of our issue is trying to learn more about the special event licenses, because there's a lot of confusion, and certainly, we're part of the confusion. How does the Series 15 special event liquor license work, and what are the requirements for both the nonprofit and the operator of that event?
And I'll turn that over to our legal department, if Matt?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, Mayor, if I'm not, just let me know. There are kind of two prongs to your question. One is, when you have an actual physical location, how many events can you have a year? And that's set by Title IV. You're allowed 12 events per calendar year. The other second prong, side of that coin, is if you're a specific nonprofit corporation or charitable corporation, whoever's applying for it, how many do you get in a calendar year, and that number is 10. So.
Per organization.
Per year, per organization.
I think we're on the way there. We will have special events also in the public side. Any of those, Joe, that are nonprofits, but will be using public property? And then we're going to have special events that will be using private property.
Correct, Mayor, there are.
Is that the same license?
I believe it is the same license. The only difference being, the events held on private property, we don't have control of the approval or nonapproval of anything except that special event liquor license.
Okay, now.
It's the same, it's the same special event license.
Okay, now, that's the, but it's, so it's the same license, though?
That's correct.
Same cost, whether it's on public property or on private property?
Yes, and it's also the same, that two-prong test is the same. You know, at the physical location, I think 12 times. And each specific organization, that's allowed to do it 10 times a calendar year.
Okay, now, as I read the regulations, the same property, the property can only hold 12 events a year on the same property?
Yeah, and just to clarify that, that would be for the private property or non-governmental property. The statute actually allows an exception for the physical locations controlled by the United States, a state or a city or town that is not licensed pursuant to this title. So the city can have as many as it wants pursuant to that exception in the same location. And a location that is not owned, operated, managed, or controlled by the government would be subject to the 12 times per year.
Okay, well, let's just follow that for a moment.
Sure.
Today, we have five events at the same property. So does that mean that that property is using up five of their 12 allocations for the entire year?
That'd be the way I'm reading the statute.
Is that the way you understand it?
Yes.
Okay. But now, a nonprofit, the same nonprofit, can have how many events a year?
10, regardless of where they have them. So they don't all have to be at the same physical location, they just get 10 a year. And that's set by the Arizona Administrative Code, which is sort of the rulemaking body. It's not in the statute itself, but it's in the rules and regulations.
Making an assumption that each nonprofit that does these events, if they use their entire 10, then these same five nonprofits could have 50 events, but only one and a half times if they use the same property for another event.
I think that that's about right. And I'll just read the rule to you. It's Rule 191-2 of 5, and this is the one that talks about specific entities holding the event. Those are the organizations that are allowed by statute to have a special liquor license. It says, "The department shall issue a special event license to an entity authorized pursuant to that section of Title IV for no more than 10 days in each calendar year." So arguably, you can have an event over a series of several days, one specific event, and it's tied to the actual days.
Okay. Now, in the, in the private side, to apply for a liquor license, you have to provide the liquor board a map of the premises that are going to be used, to include how you enforce the entry and the exit of the event.
Yeah, that's correct. Right. There's, a liquor license would go through the standard kind of application processes, any other liquor license, and you'd have to make a showing to the state of what you're looking for. One of those things is how you're going to regulate the property.
Okay.
Off, requiring a drawing.
Now, does the operator, then, of a private event, using a nonprofit as the vehicle, do they have to provide any, to the state, any semblance of expertise of knowing liquor laws and all of the things that go with it, and that you do to get a private license?
I don't, I don't think it's as detailed necessarily as a company or a bar that makes it its professional business, but certainly, I think they're going to be looking for some level of compliance with the liquor, liquor rules and regulations.
Okay. But, so either the operator or the property owner has some responsibility?
Certainly.
Of enforcing the liquor laws?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay.
And Mayor, I'd just like to point out, as part of their liquor, special event liquor application, they do submit the site plans, the ingress, egress, what the, you know, what security barriers they have, as well as the servers must be certified to be able to serve, whether it's beer or alcohol.
That's on the application?
I believe so.
Yes, I believe it is, that they have to sign that they, they understand the rules and.
Okay, that they understand the rules, but you don't have to identify the servers or acknowledge whether they've gone through.
You don't have to identify the servers.
Okay, okay, okay. Any, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, Jim, Councilman Lamerson and I asked to put this on the agenda, and I'd, to back up, this ordinance was not intended for private property. It was for downtown street closures only for all events. And I'm not saying that all events had to end at a certain time or start at a certain time, but this agenda item, the spirit of this agenda item, had to do when the city closed a street downtown. And that was in all fairness, to get a framework together for all parties involved. Currently, if you have a, an activity there, let's, I'm not even going to pick one, you know, X activity, and they, they apply for it, they get it, and if one of the owners of the square, it was, the burden on them was to come in and contest why it shouldn't happen, or how it's going to impact their business. So what, the intent of this ordinance was to put a framework in, so if the event coordinator, the person putting the event on, whether it's a nonprofit or for-profit, the burden was on that particular event holder. or for-profit, the burden was on that particular event holder to tell us why it needed to go longer or more. Because the business owners have a business to run. And they can't check the agenda every Tuesday to see if they should come in and pull away from their business to come and talk to us. So that was the spirit of this discussion.
Are we operating under the assumption that everybody is going to shut her down at ten o'clock? Is that what we're--
That's what's up for discussion today, Mayor. And like I pointed out earlier, there are very few events that really go past eight. The majority of the events are shut down at eight. But there are a few that go later. And I think to Councilman Lozelle's point, that was what some of the business owners downtown had expressed an interest in. You guys discussing was, what about those events that run past eight or ten o'clock? I don't know the time, but--
And we can always put in the ordinance, you know, this would exclude the light parade or the boot drop, or there's mainstay things that happen every year. But just because X charity decides that they need X amount raised, that they don't just come down and close down the street and decide just to have a fundraiser, just to have a fundraiser. They could do that at a park, they could do it on a private property. But this, downtown is an attractive place. Believe it or not, we get a lot of tourists that come here, other than for open space. They come up here to look at our downtown area. And lots of people just want a part of that, because it is an attraction. But we've got to look at the people that are here three hundred and sixty-five days a week, or a year, and put their blood, sweat, and tears in their business. And I don't think that they're against these events, but it just is in all, it's in all fairness, so that we have a framework that everybody knows the rules. We're all not going to like them, but at least they're there.
And if I heard you right, Joe, you said only one event this year is logged to go after ten o'clock. A single event.
That, well, I shouldn't say that. The boot drop would be the second event, but if you're talking--
And I think we've got to clarify this, too. Because are we talking about events with alcohol? Or are we talking about special events in general?
I'm doing all events. Because we can't restrict if they're alcohol or not.
I think we can restrict if they're alcohol or not, because we have to vote on every single one of them. And I think that makes a big difference. I think when it comes to the boot drop, I mean, that's put on now by one of the owners of the bars on Whiskey Row. And there's no alcohol served at it, and it goes late. So I think there is a big distinction on whether the event serves alcohol or doesn't to the, what we're getting here today.
From my understanding, Councilman Palladini had expressed that, under Arizona liquor license, we can't restrict the 2:00 AM serving time as a body, a governing body.
His concern was, you can't preempt or go beyond what the state allows. So his suggestion, at least, was, if you want to set curfews for special events, don't tie it to the liquor license. And I think that's the way he wrote his most recent ordinance. I don't have the ordinance in here, so I think we're just having the general discussion now. But that was his concern. Now, whether or not, you know, you want to take the approach that, you know, you're the body that gives the yea or nay to a liquor license, and you want to try to cap the hours, you know, you can attempt that, but there's certainly a risk there.
Well, I think the way we can cap the hours on that is, we go with our noise ordinance, which is ten o'clock. Is that correct? I mean, that's when the sound's got to be turned off, unless we give it special permission to do that.
And I will say, and I'm just going to come out and say it, ten o'clock is too late. We've already, do we collect any income tax from those events? From the food, from the booze, from, do we get any, we get a permit fee? God knows what, we don't get the full value. But so, if they eat, drink, and be merry at these events, we can't collect the sales tax where they would otherwise go downtown and enjoy the amenities there. So if you restrict it to eight, seven, nine, whatever it is, I think ten's too late. Give the opportunity that we've got them downtown, give the opportunity to our business owners to bring them into their business.
And if we're coming out with this, I think if you restrict some of these events to eight o'clock, I mean, the sun isn't even completely down yet at eight o'clock in the summertime, I think you will kill special events downtown, because they also have to recuperate the costs for the bands, for the band shelf, for the policemen, for the barricades, for the servers.
Do all special events need to be downtown?
No, I don't think so.
I think we have an overproliferation of special events downtown. If I'm a business person, you know, in Lamerson's shoes, he's not sitting here, I'd talk bad about him if he was. But in his shoes, as a jewelry store, he's not getting any bang out of having the downtown closed down for a special event. People don't even go into a store based upon having all the spots in downtown Prescott closed down for, you know, whether it's picnic on a park or whatever's going on. But those special events, at some point in time, we've got to draw a line and say, how many are we going to allow in the city of Prescott downtown that take away from our merchants' ability to be able to make a living?
And I agree with you on that.
Which brings up a point. There was an event held at Tim's Toyota for the school athletic program. Now, it was held inside, on the showroom floor. And they went till one o'clock in the morning. That's not downtown. But we had to approve the liquor license portion of it, because they did serve. And if you don't serve the liquor, it's not a fundraiser. Obviously, that's the reason. It becomes a fundraiser, is there's a product to sell. And the questions I have been asked, again, is, does it, is that last call? Is it when the music stops? Or is it when everybody goes home?
I believe what we're referring to, Mayor, is last call. So there would be people, potentially after that time, that would still, you know, be finishing their last drink.
And you bring up a good point, Mayor, I think, too. We talked about, we're going to restrict special events and have them shut down by eight o'clock. Would that be the right thing to do at Tim's Toyota? Would it be the right thing to do at our Fourth of July celebration?
And again, I go back, this is street closure only, downtown, not Tim Toyota, not Holiday Pass through there, not Goodwin Street Pharmacy. Downtown street closure only. That's all we're here to talk about. And I'd like to talk about is about the closing of the street, and not if we do a fundraiser at Watson Lake. Because we don't have twenty to eighty business owners surrounding Watson Lake affecting the business around Watson Lake.
Well, are we talking about the same thing today, then?
That's what--
We're talking about special events--
Downtown.
--that are downtown because of the physical location, but they're on private property.
No, no, no. These are the liquor consent agenda and what we're talking about, discussion of the downtown special event timeframes are two separate issues. Whether Howard is in compliance of the number, that's not what this was about. It was about closing the street. We own the street as a public. As this governing board, we should be responsible for when those streets get closed and when they don't.
We've got a couple of bar owners from downtown that have asked me questions. If there's questions, come forward, please.
And I appreciate you guys addressing this again. And I was just kind of going to go back to my perspective from when I started. I'll try not to take up too much time. Oh, James Savwini, breaking bones, sorry. In 2013, we took over and remodeled Coyote Joe's, reopened it in the downtown area. Obviously, I've been in this town for a long time, and I'm pretty familiar with what's gone on historically. I got to know some of the people down there, and I started to hear some of the concerns about some of these events that I'd never given two thoughts to prior to then. And so, we started to get together on it and talk about it, because I wanted to find out more about the dynamic of these events and how they occur and, you know, just exactly who's involved and the processes and protocols that are in place to these events. And what I really started to find out was, I'd ask a question, well, what is the current process? And while there was one, it wasn't very well-defined. So I, it started to take shape that, and I'd ask, well, why do they do this? Well, that's the way it's always been done. It was really not very well-defined. And so, as we dug in and kind of looked at this, I started thinking about, you know, how it affects everybody in the community. And overall, my opinion, and you might get differences from these other people, but they are an asset to the community. They bring people to the downtown. People come for these events, and they do explore the other things at the downtown area. The museums, all the different things, you know, Jim's Jewelry Store, they all get visited because it is a historic district. But so, what I started to think about was, how can we come together, talk about this, get a framework in place, as Greg has said, that can benefit the community going forward? If the process starts at Joe's office, and you go in and you get a packet and you fill it out? It's my belief that everything should be clearly defined and set in stone on the obligations, as you have pointed out. What does the charity have as an obligation? What is their responsibilities? What do the laws say? And what is a promoter, should they be in conjunction with the charity? What are their responsibilities? While they have been defined, there's so many irregularities there. And then I started to see that every event is pretty autonomous in nature, you pointed out. You know, the street dance is different from, the beer fest is different from, they're all different. So, all of these, and so, when you have one that needs some different latitude, whether it be more time, whether it be more, a bigger footprint, we need this, not that space. However, historically, it's been up to the public, it's been up to a lot of these guys. And again, I'm a newcomer to that downtown scene. But when you leave it to the public and to the business owners to come forward and say why they don't want something, why they have a problem, then you leave them wide open to being called anti-charity, anti-greedy business owners, this, that, and the other. And there's been, there's been this animosity that's built up between some of these downtown vendors or people that have businesses and some of these events that go on. And caught in the middle are some of our purveyors, the liquor people that donate liquor to these charities. You've got, and so, it's this swirling mass of confusion. And there's a lot of people that have been, they're, you know, they're mad about it, they're upset. So, my goal is this. I don't think that I should be the governing body that has to come forward and talk to you guys and tell you why I don't think we should have a charity event down there because it hurts my business. Frankly, when you call last call at 10:00 PM, and we send people off the streets, and there's five or six or eight thousand, and they come into my place, and now they're, I probably can't legally serve them. Because they've been served, if they've been there for seven or eight hours, you know, as a restaurant owner, my dinner service is from about seven to nine PM. So, you send them out, I'm missing my dinner hour. I have a restaurant license, I have to maintain a forty percent food sales, or I can get my license taken away. So that's an extra incumbency on me to make sure that happens. That being said, everybody's going to have to give some concessions, I think, when it comes to this. And when I've talked to a couple of the different promoters, I've heard this. Well, if we can't go to this during this event, we'll just pull the event, and we'll go. We can't do it. Well, I'm here to say, somebody else can. And I don't want that to be a hindrance on you guys. So we come, I come to ask for governance. I come to ask for direction. You know, a lot of these guys want to hurt the vendors, or they want to do this, or they want to do that. Because they feel like they're not being heard. Now, I feel like you've got to give something to get something. So, you know, if it's my way or the highway, you're not going to hear me here tell you that. But I also believe that, I don't think there's ever been a firm structure in place. And let's just use the timeframe. If it's eight o'clock, let's just say eight o'clock becomes the, hypothetically speaking, nobody, and it's eight o'clock unless the promoter or the charity comes and lays a case out and says, this is why we need extra latitude. Okay? So you let them go till nine, you let, okay, it's a street dance. Well, in talking with the promoter in the street dance, he says he needs to go to ten o'clock. Because of the logistical breakdown from the boot race and from the parade, there's not enough time. And so, in the spirit of trying to cooperate, if we could cut the logistical time down between it for an hour to two hours in the setup, could we not then cut it off the top a little bit to allow these guys and our businesses to reap some of those benefits, too? Well, it was kind of met with a stone wall. No, we really can't. It'll just ruin the event, and we'll yank it. Well, if that's the case, there's a bunch of us here that'll allow those events to go on, and they will not be hindered one bit. So, I'm just here to say that they'll still go forward, the charities will, and the events will go forward, and you'll never even know there was somebody different there, if that's the case. But really, what I would like to see is some guidance, some latitude, a framework in place that everybody can work off of. And that way, when I'm not a business owner downtown anymore eventually, you guys aren't on the council, Joe might not be working as the director at Parks and Rec, there's a framework in place that no matter who's sitting here, no matter what happens out there, when you go to get a permit and you go to put something on, there's the framework, it's all in place, it's done fairly, and it's done right, and we don't have to argue about this every year. You know, so I just, I guess a little bit of governance.
Jimmy, I think that's why we're here.
Well, of course.
Let me ask a question before you leave. A licensed retailer, as Jimmy, anybody back here, they can only buy their liquor from an authorized distributor. They can't go over to Walgreens and buy beer and booze and sell it, as I read. I think that's what I read.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, who enforces that? Now, if you go into a bar, if the liquor people go into a bar, they can identify whether the bottles on his shelf was purchased from an authorized state distributor--
Correct.
--in a C and those people.
Right, well, they can come up and figure out--
How does the enforcement of these one-time events, particularly on private property, enforce that the product is bought appropriately?
I think the answer is fundamentally, the state is the regulator. Now, whether they send somebody up to regulate special events, I tend to doubt it.
Well, look at the same answer, Mayor. The state regulates the liquor laws, whether it's a special event liquor license or it's bricks and mortar, it's the same thing. And they do send inspectors. And I know we've not had any issues with any special events up to this point in the years that we've done them. But yeah, essentially, it's the state that monitors that, whether it's a special event liquor license or a regular liquor license.
Because you've got a couple of things happening. You have a nonprofit that's expecting twenty-five percent of the gross sales. For a one-time event, having been in that business three times, it's very, I don't know how you would go purchase product for a seven-hour event--
You don't.
--and not have a bunch of product left over. And the one thing you can't do is return.
That would be a question, Mr. Mayor, for, like, Hinsley. Mike Moore, who's the general manager of Hinsley, is here. A lot of that product is donated.
Yep.
And so, they come with a truck, they show up, and then they serve whatever they serve, and they take back whatever is left. And I think that falls within the legal guidelines, because they are, you know, a licensed purveyor by the state. And I'm not aware of that there's been any problems. And I know that there's a couple of the promoters around this town that have done a very good job of making sure that that works in coordination the way it's supposed to.
Yeah, well, inventory control is very difficult for one-day events.
Sure, sure. Well, that's why these guys come in and they do what they do. And I think that's how that's overseen. That's my understanding, so.
Okay. Thanks, Jimmy.
Jimmy, go ahead. One thing I'm kind of hearing really clear today is that we need to clearly define special events. And something I'm thinking about just as I'm sitting here is, when you go get your liquor license, you have the liquor license where you can only have forty percent. You know, some people have a full-blown bar license, other, it really changes depending on alcohol usage. Could we have different definitions for the special events and different regulations for the special events, much like the liquor licenses themselves? So, we could have events with alcohol, events without alcohol, events that will end before eight, events that want to end after ten. You know, if we can really define, then we could control what actually happens in the downtown a little better. And I don't know if that's anything that people would think about.
Well, in essence, that's what I think we've been working on. And, you know, again, Joe and I have met quite a And, you know, again, Joe and I have met quite a few times, and he's been really great to, again, it's about a framework, it's about a structure. How that, and, and I think, just like a lot of, of governance and ordinance and things you guys do, it evolves as, as the town and, and the events, and, I mean, it's, you're always going to be addressing certain points, high points, low, whatever it is. You know, Joe said, at one point, he'd said, well, we're really only talking about one event, which is the street dance. Well, today we are, right? I mean, a couple of years from now, maybe some, maybe Steve has an awesome idea for, you know, Elk Taco Day, or whatever it is. And we get a, a deal where now we have another event. So, again, it's, it's that framework that you put in place. How that comes to be, what it exactly looks like, probably needs further discussion. But, I say, if you look at the historic examples of what, and Joe gave me the spreadsheet of the events that we've had, 90% of them ended at eight o'clock. You know, so, again, I, I think it's incumbent on the individual event that needs special latitude to bring forth to you people and say, this is why, and then let you decide.
I, I just, I gotta tell you, I think we drag this whole thing out to nauseam. You know, I think you shut them all down at eight o'clock. If you wanna have it after eight, then take it to a park inside the city's network or somewhere else on private property. And the only thing that should stand alone to be able to go past that is the annual street dance. It's been going on since I was probably in boot diapers.
In, in the light parade, in the, in the boot drop.
No, so then he just, you just killed the boot drop, you just killed the rodeo dance that's over in the parking lot. That's what I'm saying, we need to define it, because we're talking about all kinds-
But, but it's a, it's a simple, a simple ordinance, and you can say, except, da, 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 da. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be multi-tiered.
Well, and then I guess what we're addressing, and I guess, I don't, and I don't know where we're at with all these permits and what the timeframes are, you guys would know, Joe would know. So if the boot drop needs to come and say, hey, look, that would be a perfect example. It's a standalone autonomous event. We need to go till midnight because that's when the boot drops.
Okay, so now-
Okay, that makes sense, granted.
Today, later on, right after this, we'll be talking about special events on private property. Are we gonna put the same rules on private property?
You can't.
Are we, but we are. We're being asked to support or not support that liquor license. So if we don't support it, and we say, you're going to 10 o'clock, you gotta be cut off at eight o'clock, now we're telling somebody what they can do on their own private property.
Chris, you're, you're confusing the purpose of this.
You're confusing the whole thing.
Because this talks about when we close the streets.
It doesn't say that on the agenda item, does it?
No, but that's what it was intended for, and I've said that, I don't, 50 times today?
Yeah. It's on city property, and it's about closing streets, that's what this whole thing's about. But we keep dragging it through the dirt on all these different benefits and everything else. Everything should shut down at eight o'clock unless it's a signature item where the streets are shut down, period. And they should-
When the streets are shut down.
And they should be drawn to a point of saying, no more than four a year, whatever the case may be, put a cap on it. They wanna have something else, like a bar mitzvah, or whatever the case may be, go to Watson Lake Park and stay there until five o'clock in the morning if you want. But you're not affecting the business climate in downtown Prescott all the time. I think it's nonsense.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm waiting in the wings, because I, Steve, right, this, this is getting way, Dave Michelson to the palace, this is getting way too complicated. Here, here's my feeling. The boot drop, the courthouse lighting, and the light parade, those are city events. They don't fall under a fundraiser, in my opinion. They're exempt from whatever regulations or restrictions you put on timeframes. They shouldn't be discussed in this, in this, even this conversation, because they're city events, it's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about fundraisers on city streets. So those three things shouldn't even be a topic, they're not an issue as far as we're concerned. They're put on by the city, the lighting, the parade, the courthouse lighting, you know, I don't think they're part of this discussion personally.
Excuse me, just to clarify, the, the Chamber of Commerce puts on the courthouse lighting, the boot drop is put on by M&amp;M, I believe.
Right, but it's not, it's not a fundraiser, it's a city-endorsed, right?
We can just add it to the ordinance.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think, those three, I don't think fall into the normal nonprofit fundraiser. So I don't think they're, if they go to midnight, you know, they go to midnight. I mean, we're more talking about the, you know, excuse me, you know, the fundraisers for nonprofits that go late. And we're not about, excuse me, we're not opposed to, nonprofits, we're opposed to liquor running late, that, that's, that's our whole issue. You know, if the event's run after last, that's fine. I, I understand that, so you've gotta come up with a time, I, I understand that. So, excuse my voice.
But you're right, you're right, Dave, that is what we're talking about. I mean, it's, it's the events with alcohol, so you got eight this year, one that goes past 10 o'clock. I mean, those are the ones we're talking about.
And, and if I could just point out, if, if the time that you were talking about was identified, and let's say it was 10 o'clock, you'd be talking about one event. So I think it's important for you to consider the amount of times that potentially somebody would come for a variance to counsel, and setting the time too early, you're obviously gonna have more that would come forward to you for consideration to go later. So I think it's important, whatever time you guys are talking about, because that makes a big difference. If it's 10 o'clock, it is, it is one event. If it's eight o'clock, it's, it was four events in, in 2014. So we're not talking about very many events here, but it does, by percentage, change quite a bit if it goes to eight o'clock.
Anyway, thank you, we appreciate you bringing it back and looking at it some more. Thanks.
Sorry about my voice.
Anyone else, Tommy?
Yes, the next item.
You've got 30 seconds.
Mayor Council.
You got a free page.
Tommy Mayor, the Jersey Lily, saloon. I, I got a lot to say. I don't know whether I say it now or wait till the next issue. Next issue is, private property, it's, and events that we've never had before and could have many, many more. We could have one a week. Now, do I talk now, or I'll wait till the next?
No, listen, we're looking at the whole picture right now, so go.
All right. As I said, I've been involved downtown, I love downtown Prescott, and I think everybody knows that. I've been involved in the, the PDP, Prescott Down Partnership, for probably 10 years on the board, member of the chamber, have been involved in several events. It was my suggestion that we do the race, after the boot race, that we did the rodeo dance, because it was no, nothing going on. After the boot race, everybody took their kids by the hand, went to Jack in the Box and went home. It's becoming, I, I, we ran it for a couple of years and didn't want to, because we have businesses to run. Then, then the J.C.'s took it over. Then they got disbarred, or whatever they got, and then the Elks took it over, and then Steve and the whole deal, but it's still in place. I'm not a, I've never turned down any application for any event that were just for downtown, that if they went to the city, they went to, they got the application, they filled it out, and they lived up to the rules of the application, and they were responsible for those rules that were in there. And then that leads to the 75%, 25% split, if, if, if that's being done. Anybody can be a, a promoter, anybody. I could be a promoter tomorrow, as long as I went by the rules and regulations that are stated. Here's, here's, well, in an area probably, never, nobody's ever come up and confronted themselves with. I've got a Class 6 license, entitles me to sell beer, wine, and hard liquor. When I bought my Jersey Lily 15 years ago, it was $80,000. Eighty grand. Now it's gone down, it went down because of the economy, down to approximately 40 or 50, it's probably 50 right now. Class 6 licenses aren't bought at the State Department of Liquor. They are borrowed from person to person, and there's only so many allotted to a county. If a county runs out of licenses, or they think that there's not enough, then they'll have an auction, and they'll go for the auction price. Well, I'm, we're sitting here, as, as, you know, other restaurant bars that are on Whiskey Row and otherwise, pay, that serve food and liquor, pay $1,200 for a license. $1,200. But they have to have 40% food sales. Law, that's it. It's, and they have a tough time doing that sometimes, sure, I'm not positive of that, but I think they have to watch it, and they're up, subject for audit. Besides the, the $80,000 license, we're confronted with a state liquor license renewal every year of $400, city liquor renewal of $600. Now, this is over and above and different from a retail jewelry store opening up downtown. Typically, they have a lease, they sign, they hire a few employees, they get some basic insurance, and they're in business. For us to get in business, the city liquor, you guys, the city charges us $600 a year for a license renewal. Health Department's $250 a year for license renewal. There's three music companies that are mandated by the government, because we play music. We could play a friggin' jukebox, and we still have to pay it, based upon our size and occupancy. That's BMI, about $800 a year. ASCAP, $800 a year. CSAC, six or $800 a year, that we have to pay, just because we have bands, which we have to pay for, the bands to be there to entertain the people, which everybody's trying to get a bite out of our fannies, because we bring people in, all the other businesses. Our insurance policy is probably $15,000, $12,000 more than the normal policy would run you for liquor liability. Nobody else has that, no other retail company has that. These things I don't think you people know about. You get into the sales tax thing, it's another story, which everybody knows my story there, bars don't even charge sales tax, they include it, but that's another story. Then you got the perception of the police and entrapment going on as far as liquor bars are concerned. I said, in perception. You got the Indian Reds, far as doing their own thing on their own basis, on their own laws, and they don't produce any sales tax for the city of Prescott. You got private clubs, you got Eagles, American Legion, you got VFWs, who work under a whole different law, which I can't control, and you got, we, none of us can control, apparently, it's, it's in, it's in place. You got DUI enforcement, big factor in our business. Everybody's taking a nip at our fanny. We got like sin tax. Everybody's after the liquor people. We work our butts off trying to, Matt, Matt told me one time, he had cigar boxes full of licenses, or, excuse me, IDs, cigar boxes full of them, that they had to, to take from people who were illegally trying to enter their, their bar. I'd like to take those down to the state and throw them on their desk, and say, why do we have the, the monitors of the, all the legal ramifications of keeping people legally drank? Why shouldn't the person who's trying to buy the booze be responsible and be punished or taken care of on their own? It's all on our, us. Everything is on the beer and wine and liquor dealers. The fundraisers, out of control. You know, enough is enough. Straw that broke the camel's back, we've gone too far, as, as far as licenses. You've got, you've got, I'm getting out, reaching out here now a little bit, you got the adult center. The city mandated that they would give them $200 a year, 200,000 a year to get them started. That time ran out, and they came back to the city and said, we can't operate. Greg probably knows this. We can't operate, we can't make it, because you're not giving us the 200,000 anymore. Well, but you can give me a license, and then we can have parties over there, we can serve beer and whiskey and wine, and we, and we can make that money back. And so, okay, well, you can actually have a license. Well, you know, they, so they give, you know, they gave them a license. You got, you got Elks Theaters, not good enough. They have nice performances, very proud of Elks, couldn't imagine anything nicer to be downtown, as far as bringing tourism, tourism dollars and so forth. Well, we can make more money if we have a beer and wine license, so let's get a beer and wine license. I mean, it's like dress shops, if they can't make it selling dresses, get a beer and drive a wine license, well, we'll make it then, we can make enough money to make it. Well, every time they do that, it's taking a bite out of our fanny. And I have never complained about any event in this town ever in 15 years. I've been an advocate of the city, advocate of, I've said many times, if they go through the, the right law, I mean, the right application, it's a legitimate deal, I'll get my share. Have your dance, have your street closure, have anything. They're not gonna stand on the damn pavement out there in Blacktop, getting free beer, or beer that's given free out of a paper cup, sitting out there very long on the street, in my opinion. They're gonna be there for a beer or two, and then they're gonna go back to the bars and so forth. Where we're paying for bands to be there, which everybody's trying to get part of the action. I don't know, I got notes here, I don't even know what I'm doing here. Now then, we've got, the next thing coming up, and every, this is hard for me to do, because I know I'm, everybody in this room I know very well, probably been to my house. Henson's I know very well. And, and I am speaking for myself here, I'm not talking about for the other bar owners, I don't, I'm not gonna do that anymore. So, you're gonna have to listen to me if, if, if there's anything that needs to be said. First of all, we had the street closures, which we normally have, the big events we've all talked about. Then we had the courthouse became an event for having events. Then the courthouse made application for a beer and wine license. They got it. So now, now then, of all things, the school, which I was, couldn't even believe it, they voted for us to have events at the school over here with a beer and wine license, just in the last 30 days. Every one of these is taking a bite out of us. Now then, we've got the Henson's coming up here, Henson's, excuse me, I mean, private property. Now, we've got five applications in here today to discuss for a liquor license on the consent agenda. That's five of maybe, they could have 365, the way this is written, in the way I understand it. These promoters are involved here, I mean, look at this. Scott Curry, Chamber of Commerce, I know him very well. Brad Newman, Scott Curry. I, I feel like I'm blindsided with this, with this next deal coming up. We weren't, it wasn't discussed, I haven't been talking to anybody, I don't even know the down partnership was discussed on it. But here we are, I've gotta come in here, just like Jimmy said, and provide my case in a negative way to people, and, you know, you don't like to do that. I don't like to be here talking about it. The fact is, they can have an event over there, like I said, they've asked for five, if that's, if they have that on a Friday or Saturday night, when I'm paying for a band and everybody else on the road's having a band, they are just like another business. They might as well have a liquor bar, a liquor store. We, this wasn't, that property was not presented to us that way in the beginning. It was presented to us, first of all, as an upstairs bar, outside path, sidewalk, going back to the, where, to the parking lot. It's far from that now. Now it's in competition with us. You know, it was never explained how they're gonna lock it up, who's gonna lock it up, who's it gonna be for. But all these people, I don't know why St. Michael's wouldn't be here, I don't know why Bachelor Court's in here, I don't know why House of Empires isn't here. That's the places that you go to for weddings and graduation parties and that sort of thing. This is gonna take somewhat the place of that. And if you have one every other weekend, every weekend, you might as well have that, another business there serving booze, it's right on Whiskey Row. If you wanna go there and get served, go there and get served, you're not, you're not coming to the bars. Now, as far as the timeframe and closing, I sympathize with what's been said today. At first, you know, I would say, you know, go in 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, whatever, doesn't make that much difference, we, we're full anyway, don't worry about it. And that's been my attitude. But it's getting way past common sense, and I can see a lot of problems coming up in the future, that you guys have talked about tonight, today. All the ramifications of it, and what we're into. It's too much, too many, and, and not enough clarity. And I think, I'm just saying, that there needs to be some recognition, consideration for people that have businesses down here, and I've never had that said before, but I, you know, it's come to that point. And I don't see any, any thing to stop it. If, if they can get it, if, if they can get, they can get it done, or that they're replaced, they can get it done every, every weekend.
Tommy, and I'm gonna do this, my main goal with this discussion was for street closures.
Okay. Where do you cut it?
And I hope we're on the same wavelength on that discussion, on the street closures, when the city allows a street to be closed for whatever. As far as Howard's deal, I, I've heard that if they were to get a license, a liquor license, and they'd be on the same field as you, correct?
Yeah, if they wanna go down and get an $80,000 license, because they can't serve food. If you don't serve food, you can't get a $1,200 license.
But regardless, whatever license it is, it would, they'd be on the same, whether it be beer and wine, Class 6, you know, it'd still be an establishment, whether they've got a roof over them.
I-
over them.
I invite them to go get a liquor license and then...
I'm not, but my point is, if they got it, then...
They're following the law.
Okay. Tom, I think we're, I think we got it.
You got the idea, huh?
Yeah, I think we do. The one thing I think we've clarified at this moment is that a physical location can only have 12 events a year.
Correct. Special events.
So, and so, if there are more nonprofits that wanted to use that physical location when they've used it 12 times in a year, that...
That's one a month.
Yeah, that's where we're at at this moment, I think we clarified.
As far as the closing times, I, you know, just like Jimmy said, he wants to serve dinner from 7 to 9, but he knows that that's asking a little too much. But he's, I think he's willing to settle for 9 or something like that. Now, you know, I'm not having a problem with that, and I think that's legitimate. But this other stuff had to come in and be part of this discussion, because I couldn't, you know, sit here and separate.
You were ready to explode, Tommy, I know.
Well, I had blood pressure taken yesterday. 125 over 74. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy.
Appreciate your...
Thanks, Tommy.
...pick of the times to listen.
Let's try to wrap up. Are we talking as a consensus that on the special event licenses on private property are not an issue?
The discussion I was for today, and if it wasn't clear, my apologies for not making it clear. It's for when we, as a city, close the downtown streets.
Okay. Okay, so...
And as the council knows, you have very wide discretion on how you control your rights of way in your streets.
Okay. Those are still going, obviously, what's gonna happen, we're gonna have these special event licenses on a consent agenda. So obviously, they need to follow some semblance of continuity. And we will still be looking at the public property special licenses individually as a council. Craig, is that, are we, or Allison, whoever?
Somebody.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been listening to this for the whole time. We have events that are gonna be coming forward soon, I believe, on the next agenda. One of those is a liquor license, that, an event that is going to be asking to get a special event liquor license, and it will be located on a city street. I would suggest that we do not do that on a consent agenda item, since that's coming forward quickly, and we won't have time to have the ordinance in time for that.
Sure.
And then we can come back with an ordinance suggestion that talks about city streets in the downtown, any exceptions, which you can either add to or take off from, and has a timeframe on it.
Correct. Thank you, Allison.
And a map. Yes.
Yeah. It's a square, normally.
With streets.
Okay. I'm good. You okay with that? Okay. So, let's go ahead and get in a voting mood, and do we have a motion on these special voting session on the liquor license consent agenda? Charlie, you there?
He's napping.
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have any, do you have anything on this?
No, on the item that just finished, yeah, I think the discussion needs to continue. And I think Allison's point is well-taken. And I don't have anything to pull on the consent agenda items.
Okay. You want to make a motion while you're feeling important?
I accidentally just closed my agenda items, so if somebody would be willing to do it, that'd be great.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I recommend we move to forward special event liquor licenses. Do we have to read these? Okay. Applications 2A through 2E to the Arizona State Liquor Board with recommendations of approval.
I have a question before we...
Yeah, me too.
If I may.
Question, go ahead.
You know, knowing that that facility is now there being used, I just want to get clarity from the city attorney. These folks are providing a space for special events, and it's just not 12 for that property per year. It's 12 individual promoters having subject on that property.
Only 12 events, special event liquor licenses can occur in a calendar year on that piece of physical property. That's it.
That's state law.
Unless they have a license that's tied in with their hotel.
Like a beer and wine or something of that nature.
Right. If they're able to obtain on the market a license, or get a license transferred, then the rules change a little bit there.
I'm glad I asked the question, because when you look at the people, Scott Curry, and you look at the different applicants, they're applicants on a piece of property that somebody owns. And now that you've clarified that, thank you.
You're welcome. We don't have a second yet either, just for the record.
And can we discuss in between those two?
I'll second it, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, item A through E. The vote, please.
Can I throw in discussion?
Big pardon?
Can I say anything?
Sure, sure.
Just looking at this, I mean, I really see Tommy's point. And I know, I think the Henson's have done a real nice job putting this place together. I think it's gonna be a real attraction down there. I don't know if we've looked into if there is a liquor license that applies to this piece of property, if it has to be something like Tommy says. I was looking through the different listings, and there are actually hotel license that you can get. I'm sorry, Dana was gonna say something. She's gonna correct me, I think.
Oh, Mayor Paton Kukneal, I did speak with the state, and they can, as a business, go through and get a Series 6, and they're thinking Series 6 or Series 7 liquor license for the hotel, and then that property would be part of, an extension of that liquor license.
So, would they qualify under a number 11?
We didn't go that far into looking. They would do it application for whatever they felt was the appropriate one, and the state would go through the whole process of looking at that. So they might fall under a hotel. It just depends on their...
And I don't know what that would cost, and, you know, Tommy, between $1,200 and $80,000 is probably a little bit of room to work. But I just see this, this property really should probably get a permanent liquor license on it, and then it could operate just as a bar, or a restaurant, or whatever they want to do on this property could be. I can see how this could get to be real flooded, because you got all these events that I think they're getting charged $60 per special event to do this. I like the fact that they're raising money for Yavapai Exceptional Industries, Akron Music Park, Teen Launch Center, Boys and Girls Clubs. You know, these are all good things to be, to be raising money for, but does it come at the expense of the other establishments on Whiskey Row, under different type of rules?
They're only allowed 12.
But they're only allowed 12 in a year.
Now, they're allowed 12, but you put these on the right weekends, it can really have the effect.
But they're still only allowed 12 by state law.
That's correct.
We don't have a choice with the matter. That's the point I'm trying, I mean, I appreciate you discussing, but we can't do anything as a body, other than to let Henson's know that when their 12's up, the bell rings, that they need to do something different. That's their call as a business owner.
And I get that, and that's what I was raising earlier. I just would like to see that, get a liquor license for that piece of property itself. Thank you.
Anything further? Comments from the public? Okay. Let's vote.
Aye.
Okay.
Passes 5 to 0.
Okay. Anything further, Council?
Nope.
Thanks for being here. We're here.